Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I call the Hampton City School Board Meeting of Wednesday, May the 7th, 2025 to order. Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Alfonja?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for. And at this time, I will turn our meeting over to Mr. Caleb Lucas, our student rep to the board, to continue on with our opening.
Thank you, Dr. Mason. Good evening. I ask that you all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance as we have Ms. Remington Keo, a fifth grader at Asbury Elementary, lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Remi. I understand that you have something prepared for us today. All right, the floor is yours.
I'm a happy dreamer. I'm really good at dreaming. Daydreams, big dreams, little dreams, creative dreams. Sometimes the world tells me, sit still, be quiet, pay attention, focus. But my mind have, but my dreams have a mind of their own. Sometimes my mind just takes flight. I hear a beat and I gotta move. Then I hear another and another. I wish you could hear inside my head. Sometimes I'm a quiet dreamer when I make time to stay still and hear myself think, to let go and see what takes shape. Sometimes I'm a swing high dreamer, way up high, beyond the clouds, so high I could touch the sky. I can also be a loud dreamer, a shout at the top of my lungs dreamer, even if it's just a loud inside my head dreamer. Sometimes I'm a colorful dreamer, painting my own path full of surprises at every turn. I can dream even when the lights are out, all circuits on, fireworks, I light up. I'm all ears, eyes, heart, and mind. I'm really good at being me, a dreamer, surprising, caring, funny, gentle, and smart.
That was awesome, Remi, thank you. So, just a few questions. Can you tell us your school and grade one more time?
Um, fifth grade at Asbury Elementary.
Awesome. And can you tell us your favorite subject?
Uh, probably math and writing.
Awesome. Um, what's something that you want to be when you grow up?
Um, probably a cosmetologist or something.
Okay, awesome. And do we know what middle school we're going to next year?
Um, I'm not sure yet.
Okay, that's okay. Um, and finally, can you tell us who's here with you?
Um, my mom, my little sister, my older sister, my brother, and my dad.
And can you all stand to be recognized? If you all don't mind standing to be recognized? Awesome, thank you, Remi.
All right. Thank you very much. And also, I know you have some of your administrators here as well. Would you all stand to be recognized, your administrators and your teachers as well? Comments from board members? Well, thank you very much for sharing that with us. And I certainly encourage you to continue to dream no small dreams, dream big dreams, and allow those dreams to take you as far as you want them to take you, okay? And in life, watch out for those dream killers because you'll have folks that will try to take your dreams away from you, okay? But thank you so much and thank you for sharing her with us this evening. All right, moving right along to item 1.03, adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board? Mr. Kilgore?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agenda as presented with the following modifications. Uh, I'd like to add two action items. Action item 6.03, grievance matter 2025, TACO 2, and action item 6.04, amend the American Tower, Cell Tower lease agreement located at Bethel High School.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve tonight's agenda with those two amendments. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so that'll move us to item number two, which is our recognitions, and I will gladly turn it over to Ms. Kelly Goro.
Usually I'm the short one, but now I get to actually move the microphone up. All right. All right, well, thank you Chair Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Alfonja, members of the school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. We have several exciting recognitions tonight, so I hope that you all brought some snacks because we've got lots and lots of students to recognize and, well, staff members. And at this time, Ms. Jackson Alfonja is proceeding to the microphone at center stage to assist with recognitions, as well as Ms. Charbonneau. Thank you. All right, so our first recognition this evening is Kalia Perry, a basketball player from Hampton High School. Kalia, would you please join me down front at the podium? Stand by me and face the board while I just talk about you a little bit, okay? All right. So, Kalia Perry has been named the Basketball Coaches Association of Virginia Class Four Player of the Year and the Virginia High School League Class Four Girls State Basketball Player of the Year. Let's give her a hand. These two recognitions are cementing her status as one of the top high school basketball players in the state. At six foot one, power forward, Kalia has been a first team All-State selection for three consecutive seasons, leading the Crabbers with an outstanding 27.2 points, 9.1 rebounds, five steals, and two assists per game this season. And yes, that was per game. Her exceptional play helps guide Hampton to a 21-5 record, a region four championship, and a state semifinal appearance. In championship play, she delivered 10 points and seven rebounds in the 2023 state title against Pulaski County, and led with 19 points and 17 rebounds in the 2024 state finals against Wood Grove. Alongside her Virginia Player of the Year honors, Perry has also earned Regional Player of the Year for two years and All-Taiwater First Team for two years. Now set to take her talents to the University of Maryland Eastern Shore, Perry is poised for success at the collegiate level, continuing her legacy as one of Hampton's finest athletes. Let's give her another round of applause.
And the certificate reads, congratulations, this certificate is proudly presented to Kalia Perry, Hampton High School, Virginia High School League Class Four Girls State Basketball Player of the Year 2024-2025. And this one also reads, congratulations, this certificate is proudly presented to Kalia Perry, Hampton High School Basketball Coaches Association of Virginia, Class Four Player of the Year 2024-2025. All right, we would also like to recognize your head coach, Ms. Shonda Bailey, is she here? Please stand. Thank you. Let's have a round of applause one more time for Kalia Perry, Basketball Coaches Association of Virginia, Player of the Year, and VHSL Class Four State Player of the Year.
And Ms. Jackson Alfonja, if the coach would like to say a few words, that would be great.
Yes, Ms. Bailey, would you like to say a few words, please?
I'll be brief.
Um, Katie has been a great player to coach and mentor for five years. We are sad to see her go. She is hands down one of the best players we have had in the history of Hampton High School, and I'm wishing her nothing but success at UMS. We'll be supporting her, watching her, and I'll be quiet before I cry, but that's it.
And before you leave the stage, hold on a moment. I know you have a large support team here cheering you on. Would they please stand to be recognized, your family, your friends? Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congrats. All right. Our next recognition is in honor of Chef Travis Walker and members of the Galaxy Phantom Six Culinary Team of Phoebus High School. So at this time, could I have Chef Walker, Andre Romo Mello, Desha Edmonds, Arianna Morgan, Samir Clemente, Diamond Fulton, and Makai Johnson to please join me down front at the podium? That's all right, don't get behind me, they want to see your pretty face, not mine. All right. So on April the 8th, 2025, the culinary team traveled to Houston, Texas, and yes, that was over spring break, they were still working, to compete in the NASA Hunch Culinary Challenge National Competition after securing first place at the NASA Langley Research Center Hunch Competition right here in February. We are thrilled to announce that on April 24th, so they had to go compete, and then they had to come home and wait for a couple of weeks to find out if they were winners or not, so they were anxiously waiting, and they were officially named the national winners. Let's give them a round of applause. So their winning entree, called Rasta Pasta, will now be processed for spaceflight and enjoyed by astronauts aboard the International Space Station, an incredible honor and testament to their hard work, creativity, and culinary excellence. In addition to this historic achievement, the team has been invited to present their winning dish at the American Culinary Federation National Convention where they will have the opportunity to earn scholarships and additional prizes through the American Academy of Chefs and Sullivan University. This is not their first win, we have had them here before. This is actually their third national win. Yes. As they previously had top honors in 2015 and 2019. And one thing I'd like to mention as well, I had the opportunity to watch them cook the Rasta Pasta dish last week for Beverly Kidd for Channel 3, and they will be spotlighted in a few weeks on TV as well. And she really enjoyed their food.
Chef Walker, with you and your students, please join me on the stage. How you doing? Good, good. I would like to share this quote from Executive Principal David Coakley. Phoebus High School is extremely proud of our culinary students and Chef Walker. This national win truly embodies our commitment to greatness every day in every way. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, and myself, the Hampton School Board and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate banner and also a coin for each of you. And the certificate reads, congratulations, this certificate is proudly presented to Phoebus High School, Galaxy Phantom Six, NASA Hunch Culinary Challenge National Winner 2024-2025.
Chef Walker, would you like to say a few words, please?
Oh, man, a few words. First of all, I'd just like to thank everyone, especially our administration team for all your unwavering support of our students and the parents of our students as well. And most of all, guys, thank you guys for showing up to practice and working hard every day. That's all.
All right, let me get a picture real quick.
All right, before Chef Walker and our students return to their seats, if there are any family members, administrators, staff, or others in the audience that are here to support this great team this evening, please stand to be recognized. Awesome, awesome, thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Kelly Goro?
Yes.
May I say something, please, to Coach Chef Walker?
Sure.
You know that Rasta Pasta is a Jamaican dish. Just want to acknowledge that.
And one of your favorites, Mr. Samuels.
One of my favorites. So I'm coming to the Phantom and to make sure that you make my special Rasta Pasta.
It's got quite a bite, I will say that. All right, moving on to our next recognition this evening. We are very excited that tonight we are honoring 64 students who are members of the Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College of Experience and one additional student from Bethel High School. These 65 students will graduate with their associate's degree from the Virginia Peninsula Community College on May 15th at the Hampton Coliseum before even receiving their high school diploma. Let's give them a round of applause. So through our partnership with VPCC and ACE, it creates an opportunity for students to complete a sequence of college credit courses that will also count for high school graduation and earn up to two years of transferable college credit tuition-free while still in high school. VPCC and ACE offers a three-year academically rigorous program that allows students to progress towards their next academic goal by compressing the timeline to obtain a college degree. In addition to the opportunity to earn a high school diploma and college degree simultaneously, the benefits include saving money on college tuition costs, a seamless transition from high school to college, and increased opportunities to earn higher wages. Students have the opportunity to earn an Associate of Social Science or an Associate of Science degree before they graduate from high school, which increases career opportunities and post-secondary options. So at this time, I'm gonna, we're gonna break them into three groups because there are 65 of them, and there is no way we can recognize all 65 at the same time. So listen for your name when I call your name, if you could just join me down front at the podium facing the school board. So the following students, Nathaniel Anthony Jr., Sean Anthony, Kayla Bradley, Jai Connors, Jaden Cooper, Nicholas Quilar Luago, Shamaya Davidson, Genesis Davis Johnson, Sol Edmund, Liam Hayden, Kalise Johnson, Tiana Johnson, Destiny Jones, Aiden Lane. You can go all the way down. Emily Moore, Giovanni Pascal, Anaya Perry, Arianna Robinson, Josiah Robinson, Diamond Smith, Haley Stump, Makai Todd, Damonte Williams, Isabel Wilson, and Lilly Young. No, you're good. I just don't want you to stand behind me. Okay, don't stand behind me, they want to see your beautiful face, not mine. So these students here are receiving their Associate of Social Science degree next week, right? Next week, graduation from VPCC. Let's give them a huge round of applause.
At this time, I ask these students to join me on the stage. We are so excited tonight to honor all of our students who are graduating with their associate degree. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to each of you. I will read the certificate one time, and then I will call each by name. Congratulations, this certificate is proudly presented to Nathaniel Anthony Jr., Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College Experience, Associate of Social Science. Nathaniel? Sean Anthony. Kayla Bradley.
Okay, you can come up. Thank you.
Congratulations. Jai Connors. Jaden Cooper. Nicholas Quilar Luago. Congratulations. Shamaya Davidson. Congratulations. Genesis Davis Johnson. Sol Edmund. Liam Hayden. Kalise Johnson. Tiana Johnson. Destiny Jones. Aiden Lane. Emily Moore. Congratulations. Giovanni Pascal. Anaya Perry. Arianna Robinson. Josiah Robinson. Diamond Smith. Haley Stump. Makai Todd. Damonte Williams. Isabel Wilson. Lilly Young. Lilly. Congratulations. Congratulations to each of you for this outstanding achievement. We will recognize your parents and guests once we conclude all of the associate degree recognitions, so you may return to your seats at this time. However, let's have a hand of...
So that again was our Associate of Social Science degree. The next two groups that we're going to recognize are actually earning their Associate of Science degree. That group's a little bit larger, so we've split those, that one in half. So, when I call your name, if you would please join me down front at the podium. Josiah Aaron. Tassiana Allen. Isabella Alt. Taylor Barnes. Robert Beach. Natasha Bogoki. Shade Bolden. Cadence Bone. Soray Brown. Lauren Burrow. Trinity Chambers. Avery Cox. Lumavi Felt. Kalia Flonoy. Joseph Frederick. Aubrey Gergatz. Cadence Grace. Joaquin Harrison. Jeffrey Hickman Washington. And Dante James. Like ducking so you can see them.
At this time, I ask these students to please join me on the stage. Again, we are so excited to honor you tonight. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton City School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to each of you. I will read the certificate one time, and then as I call you each by name, please come over and receive your certificate. This certificate is proudly presented to Josiah Aaron, Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College Experience Associate of Science. Congratulations. Tassiana Allen. Isabella Alt. Congratulations. Taylor Barnes. Congratulations. Robert Beach. Congratulations. Natasha Bogoki. Shade Bolden. Cadence Bone. Congratulations. Soray Brown. Lauren Burrow.
Give me a hug, Lauren.
Trinity Chambers. Avery Cox. Aviram Lumavi, I'm sorry, Lumavi Felt. I apologize. Congratulations. Kalia Florney. Congratulations. Joseph Frederick. Congratulations. Aubrey, Aubrey Gergatz. Cadence Grace. Congratulations. Joaquin Harrison. Congratulations. Jeffrey Hickman Washington. Congratulations. And Dante James. Again, we will recognize your parents and guests once we conclude all of the associate degree recognitions, so you may return to your seat. However, as you return, let's all give these wonderful students an round of applause for the accomplishments of earning their Associate of Science degree.
Before we call the third group up, what I would like to share is, this is just the first of celebrations. Obviously, we're very excited that you will be earning that degree at graduation next week at the Hampton Coliseum. I know that City Council will be recognizing you. Also, we will have our photographer out at your buildings getting your cap and gown photos so that we can... so that we can run your pretty faces in the newspaper. There will be a newspaper ad in the middle of June when graduation is happening. And we'll also make a small video with your graduation photos that we will share afterwards. So this is just the first step of celebration in this huge milestone. All right, and our last group of Associate Students, and these are also earning the Associate of Science degree, please join me at the podium as I call your name. Jasir Jones. Faris Knight. James Limbruber. Madison Marshall. Ariana Martin. Xavier Missy Ndong. Journey Rice. Lindsay Rivera. Soray Sandifer. Jordan Sargent. Kalen Sears. Jeremiah Smith. Owen Smith. Robert Staten III. Alyssa Thomas. Zanay Thurman. Bishop Upton. Zaraya Williams. Karis Winder. And Leila Witherspoon. Did I say that wrong? Karis. I'm so sorry. Karis Winder. I've tried so hard. I even practiced. There's 65 names. Karis Winder and Leila Witherspoon. Let's give everyone a huge round of applause.
All right, could I please have all these students to join me on the stage?
You're the only group that did it correctly. And again, I apologize if I butchered a few names.
Me too. We're truly thrilled to celebrate all of our VPCC graduating students this evening. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to each of you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Jasir Jones, Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College Experience, Associate of Science. As I call your name, just please come over and accept your certificate. Faris Knight. Faris, I'm sorry. Faris Knight. James Limbruber. Congratulations. Madison Marshall. Ariana Martin. Congratulations. Xavier Missy Ndong. Congratulations. Journey Rice. Lindsay Rivera. Congratulations. Zara Sandifer.
Sandifer.
Sandifer. Okay. Zara Sandifer. Congratulations. Jordan Sargent. Congratulations. Kalen Sears. Congratulations. Jeremiah Smith. Owen Smith. Congratulations. Robert Staten III. Congratulations. Alasia Thomas. Congratulations. Zanay Thurman. Congratulations. Bishop Upton. Zaraya Williams.
Zaraya.
Zaraya Williams. I'm sorry. Karis Winder. Karis. Karis Winder. And Leila Witherspoon. Let's have a huge round of applause for these students. Congratulations to all of our 2025 ACE and VPCC graduates. We are so, so proud of each of you. We wish you the very best in your future endeavors. I would like to ask all of the special guests you have with you tonight, parents, family members, school administrators, teachers, students, and staff supporting you to please stand up to be recognized at this time. Congratulations again. You guys may return to your seats.
All right. It is now our pleasure to recognize the Class of 2025 Saludatorians for each of our four high schools. When I call your name, if you would please join me down front. Jamaya Ribbon. Naomi Flores. Willard Davenport. Dante James. And Owen Smith. All right, so we're going to start with Jamaya Ribbon. Jamaya? Step forward for me. All right, we're going to talk all about Jamaya here. Jamaya Ribbon is the Saludatorian at Bethel High School, the home of academic excellence. We are honored to recognize Jamaya, an exceptional student who has demonstrated outstanding academic excellence and leadership throughout her time at Bethel High School. Jamaya holds an impressive 4.48 GPA and has been actively involved in numerous activities. She served on the Bethel Bearfax Newspaper, the Hampton Youth Commission, where she chaired the Youth Voice Initiative, as well as participating in Model UN and the Speech Club. Her leadership roles include serving as the Class of 2025 Historian for four years, SCA Historian, Secretary of the National Honor Society, Secretary of the African Student Association, and President of the Key Club. Jamaya was accepted to nine colleges, including Old Dominion University, Johnson &amp; Wales University, Washington &amp; Lee, Hampton University... I didn't say that's what she selected, but she was accepted. James Madison University and the University of Missouri. She plans to attend James Madison University, Go Dukes, to major in Media Arts and Design with aspirations of pursuing internships and building a career in broadcast and investigative journalism. Let's give her a round of applause. If you want to walk up the stairs so you don't trip, she's going to call you.
Jamaya, would you please join me on stage? On behalf of the Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Jamaya Ribbon, Bethel High School Saludatorian. Congratulations. We're going to ask that you remain on stage until we recognize all of the Saludatorians.
All right. All right, the Hampton High School Saludatorian is Noemi Flores. This evening, we proudly recognize Noemi, a remarkable student who has achieved a 4.5 GPA while actively participating in a wide range of activities at Hampton High School. Noemi has contributed her talents to the marching and symphonic band, varsity softball, and the Hampton Youth Commission. She's also a dedicated member of multiple honor societies, including ROKAPA, National Honor Society, TRIAM Music Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society. And she has served through STEM and PAC. She's also a member of the GSA. Noemi has been accepted to several prestigious universities, including the University of Virginia, George Mason University, James Madison University, Old Dominion University, Christopher Newport University, and Virginia Commonwealth University. She plans to attend the University of Virginia, and that is what, Go Wahoos? Go Wahoos, and major in human biology on the pre-med track with the goal of becoming a pediatrician after graduation. Let's congratulate her on her extraordinary achievements and wish her the very best as she continues her journey towards a bright and impactful future.
Noemi, would you please join me on stage? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton City School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Noemi Amor Flores, Hampton High School Saludatorian. Congratulations.
All right. Next, we have Kickitans Saludatorian for the Class of 2025, Willard Davenport. This evening, we proudly recognize Willard, an outstanding student who has achieved an incredible 4.59 GPA while excelling in a wide range of activities. Willard has showcased his talents in show choir and theater. I was going to say, you mostly have seen him with the Next Generation storytellers, yes? And has been an active leader through student council. He's also a member of the ROKAPA Honor Society and the National Honor Society, demonstrating his commitment to both academics and community involvement. Willard has been accepted to several distinguished universities, including Old Dominion University, University of Virginia, Randolph-Macon College, Christopher Newport University, and Virginia Commonwealth University. He plans to attend Old Dominion University, Go Monarchs, majoring in mechanical engineering with aspirations to earn his master's degree in aerospace engineering. His goal is to help develop sustainable aerospace technologies that protect and preserve our environment. Let's give him a round of applause.
Willard, would you join me on stage, please? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. The certificate reads, "Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Willard Davenport, Kickitans High School Saludatorian." Congratulations.
All right, and there is a reason I have two individuals still standing beside me, because we actually have co-saludatorians from Phoebus High School, the home of the Phantoms. We have Dante James and Owen Smith. But we're going to go ahead and begin with Dante James first, so they each have their spotlight. So Dante James, tonight we proudly recognize Dante, an outstanding graduate from Phoebus High School, who is completing his senior year with an impressive 4.65 GPA. Please applaud. Dante has excelled both academically and athletically, playing basketball for Phoebus High School and the DDP Elite Travel Team, as well as being a valued member of the Phoebus Soccer Team. He also participated in the Academy of the College Experience Project-Based Learning Program, further enhancing his academic journey. Beyond school, Dante has given back to the community through volunteer work with the Virginia Peninsula Food Bank, Mary Immaculate Hospital, Basketball 360 Academy, Middlesex High School Basketball, and served as a camp counselor for the Christopher Newport University Men's Basketball Team. Dante was accepted to nearly 25 colleges and universities, not going to read all 25, but yes, he was accepted to 25, nearly 25, including Bethune-Cookman University, Hampton University, Morehouse College, Penn State, Purdue University, and North Carolina Central University, among others. He will attend North Carolina Central University in the fall. Is that true? You're VCU, right? I just had a conversation with your roommate yesterday. Okay, that's wrong in the script. All right, he will attend VCU in the fall, majoring in pharmaceutical sciences with a concentration in chemistry and pharmaceutical business. His inspiring goal is to one day open the first black-owned, major pharmaceutical company dedicated to serving people of all backgrounds while upholding the highest ethical standards. Let's give him a round of applause. So... I know I messed up on the college, but we're glad that you are staying local so that you can come back to Hampton after you graduate and do that here.
Dante, please join me on stage. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Dante Dimitri Nagozie James, Phoebus High School Co-Saludatorian.
All right. And certainly last but not least, is our other co-saludatorian at Phoebus High School, Owen Smith. This evening, we proudly recognize Owen, a remarkable student graduating also with a 4.65 GPA from Phoebus High School. Owen has balanced his academic success with a wide range of interests, including bowling and playing the drums. He's an active member of the National Honor Society, National English Honor Society, Phoebus Golf Team, Young Men's Club, Chess Club, Spanish Club, and the Scholastic Bowl Team. Beyond academics, Owen has demonstrated a deep commitment to service. His volunteer activities include assisting the elderly, preparing meals for men's homeless shelters, assembling hygiene kits for the homeless, fundraising for veterans, and breast cancer research, supporting community events at the Community Nights Bingo Hall, and reading to elementary students through the Phantom Reads program that we all know and love. Owen was accepted to 15 colleges and universities, including Hampton University, University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, Old Dominion University, Virginia Commonwealth University, and William &amp; Mary University. I hope I have this right. He has decided to attend Christopher Newport University? Christopher Newport University in the fall, where he plans to major in mathematics, computer science, and data science. So after college, Owen hopes to continue helping others, remain active in community service, and mentor young bowlers. Let's give him a round of applause.
Owen, would you please join me on stage? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Owen Steele-Smith, Phoebus High School Co-Saludatorian. Congratulations to our Saludatorians. You all are to be commended for your academic excellence. Before you return to your seats, we have an additional special gift to present each of you. As they receive their gifts, if there are any parents, family members, special guests, administrators, or teachers in the audience tonight supporting these exceptional young people, please stand to be recognized. Thank you all very, very much.
And before they leave, I want a quick picture, please.
Okay.
We did not get a picture of all of the VPCC because there were 65. There was too many to get on stage at once, so that's where we'll be getting their individual shots as well. Perfect. Thank you.
Congratulations once again. You may return to your seats.
All right, in our final recognition this evening, we are honored to recognize our 2025 Validatorians. So with Isabella Mendez, Namani Brumpart, Nishtha Brumpart, Lucy Brady, and Robert, or affectionately known as Robbie, Staten III, please come forward. All right. So first, we are going to... So first, we are going to recognize our Bethel High School Valedictorian, Isabella Mendez. Isabella, please step forward. All right. Isabella is an exceptional student graduating with a 4.55 GPA. Let's give her a round of applause. Isabella has been deeply involved in a variety of activities, serving as Key Club Secretary and participating in the National Honor Society, Multi-Language Club, Governor's School, and the Yearbook Staff. She also completed a year-long mentorship conducting research on emergency department models aimed at reducing overcrowding. Her spirit of service is evident through her volunteer work at Centerra Careplex and the SPCA. Isabella was accepted to nine colleges, including the University of Virginia, North Carolina State University, Villanova University, Franklin University of Switzerland, University of Washington, and Hobart and William Smith Colleges. She has chosen to attend Hobart and William Smith Colleges in New York, where she will major in... No? You've changed, too. Oh, where are you going? You're going to UVA? We have another Virginia school, UVA! You all keep changing on me. But are you still majoring in biology and environmental science? So she will major in biology and environmental science at UVA. She plans to pursue a career in research medicine and environmental medicine, and she looks forward to building her future in Charlottesville, and then coming back to Hampton, of course. Let's give her a round of applause.
Isabella, please join me onstage. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Isabella Mendez, Bethel High School Valedictorian.
All right. Moving on to our Hampton Crabbers. They have co-valedictorians for 2025, and they are twins, if you could not notice. We have Nirmani Brumpart and Nishtha Brumpart. And I will start with Nirmani. So if Nirmani would please step forward. I got them wrong earlier, so now I know. All right, we are proud to recognize Nirmani, an exceptional student graduating with a 4.62 GPA. Beyond her academic achievements, Nirmani is dedicated to service through her involvements with VAPS, a nonprofit spiritual organization, where she serves as a regional core team member and a key organizer for youth spiritual and social events across the Northeast region. At school, she is actively involved in the Key Club, National Honor Society, where she serves as secretary, ROKAPPA Science Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and the Speech Club. Nirmani has been accepted to several outstanding institutions, including the University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, George Mason University, Drexel University, Old Dominion University, Virginia Commonwealth University, and William &amp; Mary. Nirmani has decided to attend Old Dominion University in the fall, where she plans to major in computer science and pursue a master's degree and build a strong career in the technology field. Let's give her a round of applause.
Nirmani, please join me onstage. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Nirmani K. Brumpart, Hampton High School Co-Valedictorian.
All right. Next, we are recognizing Nishtha Brumpart, who is the older sister by 60 seconds. Did I get that correct? This evening, we are honored to recognize Nishtha, who is graduating also with an outstanding 4.62 GPA. She has demonstrated a strong commitment to leadership, service, and academic excellence. She serves as a regional core team member for VAPS IBKY, and is it Bileke? Can you say that for me? Oh, just youth? Okay, youth at her local VAPS temple, where she actively supports and organizes community events. At Hampton High School, she is a dedicated member of the Spanish Honor Society, Speech and Forensics Team, National Honor Society, ROKAPPA Honor Society, Science Honor Society, and Key Club. Nishtha has been accepted to several distinguished universities, including the University of Virginia, Virginia Tech, Virginia Commonwealth University, George Mason University, Drexel University, Old Dominion University, and William &amp; Mary. She has decided to also attend Old Dominion University, where she plans to pursue a degree in mechanical engineering and continue on to earn her master's degree and ultimately secure a meaningful and impactful career. Let's give her a round of applause.
Nishtha, on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haines, I would like to present this certificate and coin to you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Nishtha K. Brumpart, Hampton High School Co-Valedictorian.
Next, we have Kickitans Valedictorian Lucy Brady. We are proud to recognize Lucy, an exceptional student graduating with a 4.6 GPA. Lucy has balanced academic success with outstanding leadership and extracurricular involvement. She is a member of the French Honor Society, National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, Science Honor Society, and English Honor Society. She also shines on the athletic field as a member of the Varsity Field Hockey Team and captain of the Varsity Soccer Team. In addition, Lucy serves as the president of Model UN and Activities Director for ROKAPPA. Lucy has been accepted to several prestigious institutions, including George Mason University, Christopher Newport University, James Madison University, Virginia Tech, and the University of Virginia. She will attend the University of Virginia, where she is committed to pursuing a master's degree as part of her future academic journey. Let's give her a round of applause.
Lucy, on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Haines, I would like to present to you the following certificate and coin. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Lucy Brady, Kickitans High School Valedictorian. Congratulations.
All right. And our last valedictorian for the evening is our Phoebus High School Class of 2025, Robert Robbie Statean III. I feel like I need his autograph. He's got quite the fan crowd here. All right. This evening, we proudly recognize Robert, but can I call you Robbie? You said you liked Robbie better, who is graduating with an impressive 4.71 GPA. Robbie has excelled both academically and through his involvement in athletics and community service. He has been a dedicated member of the basketball and soccer teams and participated in the Academy of the College Experience Project-Based Learning Program. Outside of school, he serves as a sound technician at Providence Baptist Church, and he has generously volunteered his time at Mary Immaculate Hospital Middlesex High School Basketball, Basketball 360 Academy, and is a camp counselor with Christopher Newport University Basketball. Robbie's hard work and talents have earned him acceptance to nearly 30 colleges and universities, including Howard University, Hampton University, Tennessee State University, Alabama A&amp;M, Virginia Tech, Virginia Commonwealth University, and Louisiana State University. He has decided to attend the Virginia Commonwealth University, where he plans to major in nursing and pre-nursing. So... The reason that I knew that Dante's college was wrong, because I just had a conversation yesterday with Robbie at citizens' month of who his roommate will be at VCU. And Dante, who we just saw as the salutatorian, will be roommates with Robbie at VCU, the two of them. So after graduation, he hopes to become a travel nurse while also continuing to grow his clothing brand. We are incredibly proud of his achievements and look forward to seeing his success both in healthcare and entrepreneurship.
Robbie, on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, myself, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Haines, I am honored to present this certificate and coin to you. Congratulations. This certificate is proudly presented to Robert Lee Statean III, Phoebus High School Valedictorian. Congratulations. Ladies and gentlemen, these are our 2025 valedictorians. Let's have a big hand for these outstanding and exceptional students. We are so very proud of each of you. We wish you the very, very best in your future endeavors. Before you are seated, I would like to present you an additional special gift and share the poem and what is in the gift box that you and the salutatorians received. Here is the poem. "Caps in the air, it's time to cheer. Your graduation day is finally here. All the late nights and hard work, too, have finally paid off, and we're proud of you. You've achieved so much in just a few years. You've reached for your goals and conquered your fears. And now it's time to spread your wings, to take on the world and all that it brings. So as you pack for this journey, here's a small gift with some essentials and items to give you a lift. There's cookies and crackers for quick, easy snacks, popcorn and some candy for late-night attacks, a pen and some pencils with a sharpener or two, a notebook to jot down all that you must do, bright sticky notes and a set of highlighters, a good coffee mug for pulling all-nighters. But your time spent at college won't be all work and no play, so we threw in sunglasses to brighten your stay. With eyes full of wonder and a heart eager to begin, don't forget to have fun as you take it all in. Congratulations, graduate. You've come this far, and we know you'll go further. You're an HCS shining star. With dreams in mind, new adventures await. The future is yours. It's yours to create."
Can I get a quick photo?
I'm gonna take a quick photo. All right. Before our students return to their seats, I would like to ask all of the special guests that are here tonight, parents, family members, school administrators, teachers, students, and staff supporting these young people to please stand to be recognized.
And I will say, this truly has been a wonderful evening celebrating the outstanding achievements of so many of our students. So thank you all for coming out. And Dr. Mason, this concludes our recognitions for this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any comments from board members? And somehow, everything clears right on out. All right. What a wonderful, wonderful group of students. It's always really, really nice when we have an opportunity to celebrate our students. It was a long, long recognition. So thank you very much, Ms. Goral, for putting that all together. And thank you very much, Ms. Afanjah, for moving right along with our recognitions. I'm just impressed by our students and what they continue to do with Hampton City Schools. And I'm also impressed with all of our staff and our teachers who really help our students to achieve such great things. And so, moving right along, that brings us to our consent agenda. We have 3.01 Personnel Report 25-07, 3.02 Certification of the Closed Session of April 23, 2025, 3.03 The School Board Consent Receipt of Donations for May 2025. What is the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Bates Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. And at this time, we'll move to item number four, which are superintendent and staff reports. So I will turn it over to Dr. Haines.
Thank you, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson-Afanjah, school board members, and the Hampton community for our first presentation this evening. Under the "One Community, One Transformation" mantra, we have Ms. Shamika Pollard, Chief of Secondary School Leadership, who will present an update on our dual enrollment program offerings to include our ongoing partnership with the Virginia Peninsula Community College. Ms. Pollard.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson-Afanjah, members of the school board, Dr. Haines, and our Hampton community. This evening, I am excited to provide an overview of the dual enrollment program offered at each of our four high schools and the benefits it provides to our young people and their families within our community. Tonight's presentation will identify dual credit opportunities provided by Hampton City Schools, review the overall dual enrollment design to include our partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College, the participation requirements, and our course offerings. I'll share some data related to our program growth and trends, discuss associate degree pathways offered through the Academy of the College Experience, excuse me, the Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College Experience, and share our next steps regarding dual enrollment expansion. It all begins with our promise to our students, our families, and our community. As you are aware, everything we do is anchored around our North Star, the portrait of a Hampton graduate. The portrait of a Hampton graduate ensures every student is prepared for success in careers, lifelong learning, and life. Through our collaborative work with colleges and universities, businesses, community leaders, and representatives from various branches of our military, we have redefined teaching and learning in Hampton City Schools. We focus on educating the whole child to include content knowledge, career and life skills, communication, collaboration, and leadership, as well as a positive sense of self and purpose. Dual credits allow high school students to enroll in college-level courses and earn credit prior to high school graduation. Students may earn dual credit by qualifying on a culminating standardized exam and advanced placement, which we call AP courses, and IB courses, or through dual enrollment coursework. Dual enrollment courses are college courses taught at the high school by certified instructors. Specialized courses may also be taken at the Governor's School for Science and Technology. Some of you may be wondering at home, why is dual enrollment a great option for your child? My question to you, why not? High school juniors and seniors may enroll in approved college courses and concurrently, or simultaneously, earn high school and college credit. Yes, at the same time. Yes, at the same time. Several courses offered through our partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College meet the diploma requirements for graduation from high school while also providing college credits through VPCC at no cost to our families. Dual enrollment courses provide more breadth and depth in each content area, allowing students to dive deeper into the learning experience. In addition to earning a competitive college degree and/or transferable college credits, again, at no cost, while in high school, students experience several other benefits, including access to those rigorous college-level courses, college resources such as tutoring, research databases, and library services at Virginia Peninsula Community College, and also enrichment opportunities. The dual enrollment program also provides students with a smooth transition to the college experience. Students receive encouragement, assistance, and support from the college and career coaches in HCS, mentors, VPCC instructors, academy teachers and coaches, and administrators, as well as a close-knit cohort of peers striving for the same goals. And again, my favorite benefit, the incredible financial savings. In Hampton City Schools... I'm sorry, I lost my page. In Hampton City Schools, we believe in equity through access and opportunity, breaking down barriers to advanced educational programs and vocational experiences. This includes introducing our students to college-level curriculum and showing them how courses are not only designed for the student who strives to attend a four-year university, but also those students seeking advancement in vocational fields, requiring certifications and a higher grade, and/or advancement in various branches of the armed forces. This evening's presentation will highlight our strong partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College to provide a dual enrollment program offered at each of our four high school campuses. Students who are interested in taking dual enrollment courses in high school must meet three requirements. They must be a high school junior or senior. Parents must give permission. And the student must meet all admissions requirements and prerequisites set forth by Hampton City Schools and Virginia Peninsula Community College. VPCC outlines admission requirements that must be met prior to acceptance at the college and enrollment in dual enrollment courses. VPCC uses GPA and previous coursework grades to assist in the admissions process. Currently, students who are a junior or senior have a cumulative GPA of 3.0 or higher and have taken prerequisite courses if applicable, may be accepted even if they do not meet the test score requirements. So if they have a 3.0 GPA, they may be admitted and accepted into the dual enrollment program. The Virginia Placement Test, or VPT, can also be used as an alternate option for students to show academic readiness if the other requirements are not met. In Hampton City Schools, we are proud to offer dual enrollment courses at each of our four high schools. Currently, our division has 38 teachers who have been credentialed to teach dual enrollment courses. Please note, we have an additional 10-plus who are in the pipeline undergoing an extensive review as part of the credentialing process, and we are hopeful that they will be onboard and certified to teach beginning in the fall. The first dual enrollment courses were offered in 2015. Through our partnership with Virginia Peninsula Community College, we have been able to drastically expand our course offerings. We currently offer a breadth of courses in English, math, science, and history. We also offer elective courses such as psychology, humanities, public speaking, business, art, and ethics. The first dual enrollment courses were offered in the 2015-2016 school year. The credits earned that school year totaled 518. Over the last nine years, our commitment to providing more opportunities to our young people has strengthened along with our enrollment. Student participation in dual enrollment courses and credits earned and savings for families have steadily increased even during the pandemic. Our dual enrollment program has experienced tremendous growth. As you can see, in 2024, we reached our highest amount earned, 9,318 credits. Last year alone, HCS was able to save families a collective total, last year alone, $1,574,742 in tuition costs. Nearly $1.5 million more than our first year. You can clap for that, you can clap for that. But you're really gonna clap on this next slide. To date, students in Hampton City Schools have earned 42,254 dual enrollment credits, saving our families $6,712,758. I'm gonna repeat that. The Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College Experience, or as we refer to it, ACE, is designed to provide students with a rigorous academic environment that actively supports high school graduation, college preparedness, military advancement, and workplace readiness and skills. Students in ACE have the opportunity to earn an associate degree in social science or science. The Associate of Social Science supports students interested in pursuing careers such as psychology, counseling, education, and political science. Students with a passion for science, math, or computer science would pursue the Associate of Science degree. While all of our young people have access to dual enrollment opportunities, the Virginia Peninsula Community College Academy of the College Experience allows our students to graduate with an associate's degree before earning their high school diploma. Since 2018, 161 young people in Hampton City Schools have earned their associate's degree before graduating from high school. We are pleased to announce that this year, we will add an additional 65 to that number, bringing the grand total of associate's degrees earned by students in Hampton City Schools before graduation to 226. 226. This work cannot be done in isolation. There are far too many partners in this work to name them all. However, I would like to extend a huge thank you to the team at Virginia Peninsula Community College under the leadership of President Dr. Tawana Porter Brandon. The VPCC team is accessible and always eager to support us as we continue to expand our dual enrollment program. To our high school executive principals and their teams, thank you for being champions for dual enrollment, increasing diversity in dual enrollment classes, and advocating to expand offerings in each of your buildings. We hear you, and we are working on it. I'd like to thank and acknowledge Dr. Veronica Hurd, Director of the Academies of Hampton, for being instrumental in the growth and the development of all of our academies. Next, I'd like to thank Dr. Sean Callender, the Director of Secondary School Leadership. He could not be with us tonight, but he is to be commended, commended for his unwavering commitment to the dual enrollment program in Hampton City Schools and the aggressive, very aggressive recruitment of dual enrollment teachers. I'd like to thank Dr. James Harris and the entire Department of Curriculum, Instruction, and Assessment, our very own CIA, for providing constant support and resources, excuse me, for our ever-growing dual enrollment classrooms, even with surprises at the last minute. Thank you. To our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, thank you for the vision. To my teammates on the DLT, thank you for encouragement and support to ensure equity and access for all students. And to this outstanding school board, thank you for your leadership and your interest in all that we do to ensure academic excellence for every child, every day, whatever it takes. Before I take my seat, I wanted to provide you with a brief snapshot of next steps. We'll continue to build capacity by supporting teachers with funding for graduate coursework in order to be credentialed. We'll continue to work toward expanding dual enrollment offerings in each of our high schools. Currently, we are finalizing plans to start the Legal Assistant Career Studies Certificate at Bethel High School. And we're in full implementation of the Digital Video Career Studies Certificate at Phoebus High School. We're in our first year of implementation of a welding certificate for students in the Maritime Academy at Hampton High School. And eight of our young people will be participating in the VPCC graduation, receiving three welding certificates. Next year, we plan to bring on electrician certificates as well. And we're continuing to work on establishing an associate's degree at Bethel High School, Hampton High School, and Kikatán High School. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
First of all, thank you so much for that report.
My pleasure.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Samuels?
Yeah, Dr. Mason, Ms. Pollard, thank you so much for the presentation. I'm ready to go back to high school.
Right.
I'm ready to go back to high school. I wanna get that certification in electrical installation. I think that is, that's a game changer for our young people, especially with, you know, all the workforce, the need for those industry certifications. And so, I'm just gonna jump in the time machine, and I'll be back in high school next year. Thank you.
We'll be happy to have you.
Any other board members? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. Pollard, I just wanna say, I'm just always blown away at the statistics that you give us regarding dual enrollment. This is something, it's so good, and we're so used to it being so good, that I think sometimes we may not even understand that we may be taking this for granted. Because nobody else can sing this song. This is our song. And the fact that we're able to do that in this urban school division and have these young people walking across the stage, I mean, think about it, in what other universe do you have 65 kids walking across the stage to receive an associate's degree before they even get their high school diploma? You know? But that universe is called Hampton City Schools. And it is because of the wonderful leadership we have, outstanding people like yourself, the aggressive pieces that are put in place with Dr. Harris and everybody else, and the fact that we have all become a team in this. Because these are our babies, and they represent us. When they go on to whatever college or university they decide to go on or into the workforce or into the military, they represent us, because this is where they got their footing. So I wanna thank each and every one of you for the job that you've done that we see, but more importantly, for the jobs you're doing that we don't see. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I would like to add to that, I had a conversation with someone shortly after we presented our budget request to City Council. And the conversation really talked about, in reference to how are these funds used? When we talk about taxpayer dollars and things of that nature. And this is a return on the investment.
Absolutely.
This is a huge return on the investment, and we have to continue to invest our dollars in young people. Whether you have a young person in college or not, excuse me, in public schools, in Hampton City Schools or not, and you're living in the city of Hampton, we have to make sure that we are continuing to invest in our young people, because that's what makes our community great. So we don't take this notion of One Community, One Transformation, excellence with intentionality for granted. It's a way of life, it's how we have chosen to live. This isn't a program, this isn't a project. This is how we do business in education in the city of Hampton. So thank you for sharing this information with us.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, any other comments from board members? Sure, Dr. Woodhouse?
Ms. Pollard, that was an outstanding presentation. I had a, I received a phone call from a parent whose child is going into the 11th grade, and I'm hoping that I told them correctly. It's good to know that all four high schools now have the dual enrollment piece. But her child is going into the 11th grade, and they hadn't signed up for the dual, you know, dual enrollment program. So what I told her was to get in contact with the principal. Did I tell her the right thing? Okay.
That is perfect. The principal will be able to steer that parent and that young person in the right direction, and it is not too late to sign up for dual enrollment courses.
Okay, good. And I should know this, but who does the hiring for the teachers that will be teaching in the dual enrollment? Is it the college that hire them, or is it the school system?
We hire them. They are Hampton City Schools employees, and then they are credentialed by Virginia Peninsula Community College if they have the requirements necessary to be a professor, at the professor level. So they're ours.
So there are some openings?
There are always openings. And we intentionally look at candidates to see if they have that master's degree already. However, we do support graduate coursework with funding. So if there are teachers who are interested, who, you know, have been questioning whether or not... Now, we won't pay for an entire master's degree, but we will pay for that additional coursework if you've already started or if you're going back and just need some help. We will pay for some of that coursework to get you credentialed.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right.
And we do offer a stipend, and I believe I mentioned that, but I can't recall. We do offer a stipend for the public. For all teachers who teach dual enrollment courses, they receive a stipend, and we are working to increase that stipend for next school year.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members or questions? Thank you so much. All right, Dr. Haynes?
Thank you Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Jackson Afanjah, members of the board in Hampton community. For our final presentation this evening, Mrs. Brittany Branch, Chief Financial Officer, will present the financial report for March 2025.
Good evening Chair Mason, Vice Chair Afanjah, school board members, Dr. Haynes, and Hampton community. Tonight, I am presenting the monthly operating report for March of 2025. In March, we received over $29 million in revenue. That brings our total year-to-date revenues to $222 million. The largest revenue source continues to be state funds, and we received over 67% of our budgeted revenues at the end of March. We also spent and encumbered $27 million within March. That brings our cumulative total of spending to $243 million. Our largest spending categories continue to be instruction and operations and maintenance, primarily in salaries and benefits. And by the end of March, we utilized over 74% of our budget. And just to compare that to last fiscal year, last fiscal year, we were about at 73%. So we are spending at a higher rate. Our March 31 average daily membership that we budgeted was $18,814. And we did submit the March 31 membership report, and we reported a membership of $18,651. So that is a difference of 163. Typically, that would have a larger impact within our budget. However, due to some other proposals in the state budget, which were recently approved by the governor on Friday, there is some offset, so we are actually expecting around additional state funding of about $700,000. And that number will come back to the board as we continue to monitor other revenue sources within Fund 50. And as always, you do have a list of transfers to and from the technology And as always, you do have a list of transfers to and from the technology classification for March of 2025, and that completes tonight's report.
Any questions or comments from board members? All right. Thank you.
That concludes reports, superintendent and staff reports, Dr. Mason.
All right, thank you very much. We're gonna move along to item number five on the agenda, deliberation. We have five point zero one, Hampton City Schools Staff Bonus Recommendation, five point zero two, Perkins Plan, five point zero three, Special Education Annual Plan, five point zero four, VSBA Food for Thought After-School Meals Program, five point zero five, VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award, Volunteer Firefighter One Program, five point zero six, Revision of School Board Policy IGDH Extracurricular Activities Athletics for Students, five point zero seven, Revision of School Board Policy KA, Goals for School and Community Relations, five point zero eight, Revision of School Board Policy KF, Distribution of Information Materials, five point zero nine, Revision of School Board Policy GDB, Support Staff Probationary Period, five point one zero, Revision of School Board Policy GCBDGA, Military Leave, five point one one, Review of School Board Policy GAE, Child Abuse and Neglect Reporting, five point one two, Review of School Board Policy GBK, Tobacco-Free School Division for Staff, Students, and Visitors, five point one three, Revision of School Board Policy GDF Personnel Records, five point one four, Review of School Board Policy GCBB Staff Attendance, five point one five, Review of School Board Policy GBEC Working Conditions, five point one six, Review of School Board Policy GCBH Early Close, Early Release. All right, and so we'll start off with deliberation. Five point zero one, Hampton City Schools Staff Bonus Recommendation. Dr. Haynes, I will turn it over to you to start that discussion.
Thank you Chairman Mason. On May second, 2025, Governor Youngkin approved amendments to the FY 2025 state budget, which includes funding for a thousand-dollar bonus for standards of quality or SOQ positions. I met with Mrs. Branch, our Chief Financial Officer, and members of the Division Leadership Team to develop a bonus recommendation for the school board tonight. But before I ask Mrs. Branch to come forward to provide details to the board, we would like to request if the board would consider moving this item from deliberation to items for action on tonight's agenda. And at this point, I would now ask Mrs. Branch to provide details regarding this recommendation.
Good evening again. Hampton City Schools, we are estimated to receive around two million dollars in state funding for this one-thousand-dollar bonus for standards of quality instructional or support staff positions. Within Hampton City Schools, SOQ-funded positions amount to a little over one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-nine positions. But we do employ within Hampton City Schools over three thousand employees. So this leaves about thirty-six percent of positions not funded by the state bonus. We do believe that all of our employees are important to the missions and goals of the school division, and because of the strategic way that we do budget, we are recommending to the school board to repurpose existing funds within our budget to add to the state funding, so that all Hampton City Schools employees can receive a bonus. And additionally, as we've done in the past, we are recommending a bonus to be an after-tax bonus as follows. Full-time employees will receive an after-tax bonus of one thousand dollars. Part-time employees will receive an after-tax bonus of five hundred dollars. And the proposed payout date is May twenty-eighth, which is a Wednesday, 2025. And this is in line with the General Assembly's requirement for payout before or by June first. You'll receive, or you will see full details of the recommendation within the school board board docs, and as Dr. Haynes stated, we are asking the school board to consider moving this item from deliberation to items for action tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Branch. Any questions from board members? All right. Mr. Kilgore?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we move deliberation item five point zero one, Hampton City Schools Staff Bonus Recommendation, to action item six point zero five.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore, seconded by Ms. Alfonja, that we move five point zero one, Hampton City Schools Staff Bonus Recommendation, from deliberation to items for action under six point zero five. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, Ms. Branch. Next is five point zero two, we have Perkins Plan. This is Dr. Harris.
So at the April sixteenth, 2025 meeting, Seth Black, the Director of Career and Technical Education, provided updates on the Perkins Plan application, which seeks to expand opportunities for every student to explore, choose, and follow CTE programs of study and career pathways to earn industry credentials. This annual plan requires board approval, and I'm requesting that this item be moved from deliberation to action.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions in regards to the Perkins Plan? Is there a motion from?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move that we move item, no deliberation item, five point zero two, Perkins Plan, to items for action, that would make it item six point zero six.
Second.
That's been properly moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Ms. Alfonja, that we move item five point zero two, under deliberation, to item number six for items for action as six point zero six. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
All right, motion carries. All right, and Dr. Harris, you're gonna continue right along with item five point zero three, under deliberation, Special Education Annual Plan.
Yes, also during the April sixteenth meeting, Ms. Kimberly Judge, Director of Special Education, presented the annual Special Education Federal Funding Plan in application. This annual plan also requires board approval, and I'm requesting that this item be moved from deliberation to action.
All right. Any discussion, any questions? All right, so you've heard the request. Dr. Banks Gray?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we move deliberation item five point zero three, Special Education Annual Plan, to action item six point zero seven.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved by Dr. Banks Gray and seconded by Ms. Alfonja, that we move deliberation item five point zero three to items for action under six point zero seven. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
All right, motion carries. Thank you very much, Dr. Harris. All right, so next up is item number five point zero four, VSBA Food for Thought After-School Meals Program, and that would be Ms. Gorel.
Good evening once again. Hampton City Schools were preparing an application for the VSBA, which is the Virginia School Boards Association Food for Thought Competition. That competition, we have entered before, is designed to shine a brighter spotlight on the incredible efforts of school divisions in the fight against food insecurities. Our proposed entry will highlight the school division's after-school meals program. As part of the submission program, school board approval is required before the entry can be submitted. It is on tonight's deliberation agenda and will be moved to action at the May twenty-first meeting.
Okay, all right. Any questions? From board members? All right, moving along to five point zero five, VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award and Volunteer Fighter-Fighter One Program, and that's also with Ms. Gorel.
Yes, so we are also preparing to submit an application for the VSBA Excellence in Workforce Readiness Award, which honors Virginia school divisions for innovative programs that promote workforce readiness in collaboration with the school community. Our proposal entry highlights the Volunteer Fighter-Fighter One Program, which is a unique opportunity offered in collaboration with the Hampton Division of Fire and Rescue through our Bethel High School's Academy of Law and Public Safety Fire and Emergency Services Pathway, in which students are gaining real-world training and experience in fire and emergency services. And through this program, students not only gain this valuable training that's aligned with their choice, their chosen career pathway, but they're also taking meaningful steps towards their professional goals. Again, as a part of the submission process, the school board approval is required before the entry can be officially submitted. Both of these entries, the Food for Thought and the Workforce, is not due until May thirtieth with VSBA. So tonight is on deliberation, and it will be moved to action item for May twenty-first.
All right, any questions for Ms. Gorel? Thank you very much. So moving right along with the next item on the agenda, that's with Ms. Pollard.
Good evening again. For this policy, we updated it to include language regarding sports in our middle grades as well as adding esports.
Any questions for Ms. Pollard? All right, thank you very much. All right, the next two, looks like they're housed with Ms. Oliver, Dr. Oliver.
Good evening. Both of these policies were revised just to reflect the language from the recommended VSBA language, so that's all we have.
Any questions for Dr. Oliver regarding these two policies? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the remaining policies are with Ms. Ruth.
She's not here.
She's not here, but they were.
Yeah. We don't do anything.
All right. How you doing, Ms. Ruth?
Ms. Ruth is unable to be with us this evening, so if it's a pleasure of the board, we'd be happy to bring those policies back at the most, at the next meeting, I believe we have.
Well, let me ask you, are there any questions, clarifying questions from board members?
No.
So we'll be ready to move these to the items for action at the next meeting. All right?
We appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Ruth? All right, so moving along, that takes us to items number six, items for action. We have six point zero one, minutes of the school board meeting of April sixteenth, six point zero two, certification of the closed session of April sixteenth, six point zero three, Grievance Matter 2025 dash zero two, six point zero four, the amendment to the cell tower agreement at Bethel High School, six point zero five, Hampton City Schools Staff Bonus Recommendation, six point zero six, Perkins Plan, six point zero seven, Special Education Annual Plan. And what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of action item six point zero one.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels, that we approve item six point zero one, minutes of school board meeting of April sixteenth. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Abstain.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Abstain.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. All right, for the remaining items, we have six point zero two. Let's push it to the board.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move approval of action item six point zero two.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Dr. Banks Gray and seconded by Ms. Cherry, that we approve item six point zero two. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Abstain.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Abstain.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Continuing along.
Mr. Chair, I move that the recommendation of the superintendent in the case of Employee Grievance Matter 2025, Act Zero Two, be upheld.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Mr. Samuels at item six point zero three, Grievance Matter 2025, that's zero two, be upheld. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I moved that we amend the American Tower Cell Tower Lease Agreement located at Bethel High School as recommended by staff.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse, that we approve the amendment to the cell tower agreement that's recommended by staff tonight. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the Hampton City Schools Staff Bonus Recommendation.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Alfonja, that we approve item six point zero five, the Hampton City Schools Staff Bonus Recommendation. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries.
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I move that we approve action item six point zero six, the Perkins Plan.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Ms. Cherry and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse, that we approve item six point zero six, Perkins Plan. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. And we have one more.
Mr. Chair, I move the approval of action item six point zero seven, that is the Special Education Plan.
Second.
All right, it's been properly moved by Dr. Banks Gray and seconded by Ms. Cherry, that we approve the item number six point zero seven, the Special Education Annual Plan. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. That's commendable, fellow board members. It's been a while since we've had to take a lot of stuff one by one. You guys did a good job. So that takes us to item number seven, deliberation first read. We have seven point zero one, Revision of School Board Policy KBE Internet Privacy, seven point zero two, Revision of School Board Policy DA Management of Funds, seven point zero three, Revision of School Board Policy DG Custody and Disbursement of School Funds, seven point zero four, Revision, Review of School Board Policy DJB Petty Cash Accounts, seven point zero five, Revision of School Board Policy DK Payment Procedures, seven point zero six, Revision of School Board Policy DM Cash in School Buildings, seven point zero seven, Review of School Board Policy IE Organization of Instruction, seven point zero eight, Review of School Board Policy IFB Pilot Projects, seven point zero nine, Review of School Board Policy LB Education Agency Relations, seven point one zero, Review of School Board Policy IL Testing Programs, and seven point one one, Review of School Board Policy J E D D Athletic and Extracurricular Participation. And so, the first one we have is with Ms. Gorel.
It's my third time up here this evening, maybe third time's a charm. This is just a first read on policy KBE Internet Privacy. It is just a VSBA recommended change to remove the verbiage regarding Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Any clarifying questions for Ms. Gorel tonight? Thank you very much. All right, and the next one, two, three, four, five are with Ms. Branch, so we'll welcome Ms. Branch back to the podium.
My third time.
My third time. For School Board Policy Management of Funds, D A, this was a V S B A update and five-year review. V S B A updated the legal references, which have been added. And within their five-year review, changed the nine to reflect our current municipal code structure for our technology transactions to six-eight. Then for School Board Policy D G Custody and Disbursement of School Funds, this was a V S B A update to add legal code references, no other changes. School Board Policy D J B Petty Cash Accounts, V S B A update, but no changes. School Board Policy D K Payment Procedures, V S B A update and five-year review. Some minor language changes, such as taking out his throughout the policy. And then Policy D M Cash in School Buildings, five-year review, and just changed the name of the manual used for student activity funds.
Any clarifying, any clarifying questions for Ms. Branch on any of these policies? Ms. Cherry?
Just real quick, Mr. Chair, did you say for payment procedures, the only change was taking the, pretty much the word his out? Did you say his, H I S?
Yes, his and where it said man.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other clarifying questions? All right, thank you very much, Ms. Branch. And we'll welcome Dr. Harris back to the podium for the remaining policies.
Hi, yes, Policy I E Organization of Instructions, the five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy I F B Pilot Projects, five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy L B Education Agency Relations, five-year review, no recommended changes. Policy I L Testing Programs, five-year review, no recommended changes. And then Policy J E D D, the Athletic Extracurricular Participation, is also a five-year review with no recommended changes for those policies.
Any clarifying questions for Dr. Harris? All right, thank you very much. All right, so that takes us out of our first read. So now we're at item number eight, Hearing of Any Delegation's Presentation of Any Written Communication or Petitions. Ms. Charbonneau, we have not received any. So that moves us on to item number nine, information. Nine point zero one Next Meetings. The next work session will be held on May twenty-first, right here at Jones, and the next regular meeting will be held on June fourth, once again, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. Item nine point zero two Other Items for Information. I will start with our superintendent, Dr. Haynes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week, I want to take a moment to recognize and thank all of our incredible staff members, teachers, support staff, administrators, and everyone who plays a role in the success of our students. This week, we also honor National School Nurse Day, and we are certainly grateful for our dedicated school nurses who care for the health and well-being of our students every day. To each of you, thank you for your hard work, heart, and commitment to Hampton City Schools. You truly make a difference. Our middle school basketball championship games are set for tomorrow, May eighth, at four-thirty P M. Competing for the girls' title is Phoenix versus Eaton, and for the boys' title is Kilgore versus Sims. The games will be played at Bethel High School. The tenth annual Run for the Stage five K will take place this Saturday, May tenth, at Sandy Bottom Nature Park in Hampton. Registration opens at eight o'clock A M., and the race kicks off at nine o'clock A M. This exciting event supports on-time graduation by funding community college scholarships for students. Next Wednesday, May fourteenth, we will host our second annual senior conference from nine-thirty A M. to one P M. at the Hampton Roads Convention Center. The Academies of Hampton Senior Conference is an event to celebrate, motivate, and graduate the class of two thousand twenty-five. Thursday, May fifteenth, at two P M., we will celebrate our sixty-five students who are recognized this evening as they earn their associate degree and participate in the Virginia Peninsula Community College Commencement Ceremony at the Hampton Coliseum. Right before our school board meeting on Wednesday, May twenty-first, at five P M., we will celebrate our Support Employees of the Year with a reception right here at Jones. Following the reception, our Support Employees of the Year will be recognized as part of the school board meeting. And we are pleased to announce that the annual Academic Excellence Bank will be held on Thursday, May twenty-second, at the Virginia Air and Space Center. The program will begin promptly at six P M., and guests are kindly asked to arrive by five forty-five P M. At this special event, we will recognize fourteen outstanding students from each high school, including those with the top, with the top two grade point averages at each high school, including that, I'm sorry, with the top two grade point averages at each high school level, and seniors with the highest S A T. and A C T. scores. In addition to those honoring those, in addition to honoring those exceptional students, we have extended invitations to their families, select school staff, school board members, and valued city and community partners. This, of course, will be a memorable evening as we celebrate the accomplishments of these young scholars and their continued journey towards becoming the portrait of a Hampton graduate. That concludes information from the superintendent.
All right.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Haynes. Any other items for information from board members?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Alfa?
I do have an item. We've had such an incredible night of recognitions. I just wanted to add one more to the list. As Dr. Haynes just mentioned, on next Saturday, May seventeenth, the two-hundred-plus Scholars Breakfast will be held at the Virginia Beach Convention Center. And I just wanted you all to know that our very own Chair, Dr. Richard Mason, will be receiving the very prestigious Carter G. Woodson Educator of the Year Award. Yes, yes, so we are so very proud that he was chosen for this award and is very well-deserved. We're hopeful that all board members can be present to support Dr. Mason as he receives his award next Saturday morning. Just so you know, the two-hundred-plus Scholars Breakfast is a signature event of the two-hundred-plus men foundation, and it honors African-American high school males from Hampton Roads public and private schools who are graduating with a three-point O G P A or higher. So again, we're very proud of Dr. Mason, congratulations, very well-deserved.
Thank you very much, thank you. And I will say, that is certainly a wonderful breakfast. I've been attending that breakfast for years. The first time that I saw that many young black males with a three-point O or higher G P A was absolutely amazing. Oftentimes, we hear stories about our young boys getting in trouble. So to see that many in one place being recognized, and that number has continued to grow each year. So I'm excited to see what this number is going to look like this year, and I'm truly humbled by the two-hundred-plus men organization for the award. So I look forward, hope many of you out there can join us, and I look forward to celebrating that day with my fellow board members as well. All right, any other announcement, items for information from board members? All right. Caleb, anything from you?
Oh, I'd just like to say, in the amount of information that we've seen, the amount of recognitions that we have recognized, nobody's doing it like Hampton City Schools. That has been recognized today.
Thank you very much. And I'll tell you, these lights have been so bright tonight, all right? And so it's really hard to see, but I, I do see that there's a delegate A C. Cadoza is here. I wasn't sure if that was you earlier, because there's someone who's sitting right behind you that looks like you as well. I was thinking for a minute, I may not be looking at the right person, but I, I think that is you down there. So welcome, and thank you very much for being here with us. With no further business to be brought before this board, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.